Alright, so anyhow, um, I put a little cover over my camera because cause people, uh hackers are able to see you through your own camera on your computer. I told, I told this to a girlfriend of mine years ago. And sure enough, about two years later, I was in Barnes and Nobles here down, down the street. And, um, my light on my camera came on. And that, you know, and now they can do it so that your light doesn't even come on. They just, they can just see you through your computer on your camera. So, uh, you know, my recommendation is to tape some kind of cover over it, a piece of cardboard or something. So that, and, and only use the, uh, only take it off when you're ready to use the camera on your, on your computer. So I would highly recommend that, but that's besides the point. So anyhow, um, anyhow, um, I, I don't know when the last time was that I did a, uh, Facebook Live here and I'll tell you here in a second. It's been a while, but anyhow, it is what it is. Um, well, it's been, I can't tell, but anyhow, um, just to go over some of the things. First of all, happy 4th of July to y'all. Have a blessed, awesome, safe, fun 4th of July. Um, I don't even have my flag, do I? Wait a minute, timeout, I'll be back in a second. There you go, cupcake. Woo-hoo, woo-hoo. So, um, unfortunately, well, yeah, unfortunately, they're not gonna have fireworks here in Flagstaff. In fact, um, a pla- a place where I grew up at, the place where I grew up at, or went to high school at, I should say, um, is a, is a lot like Flagstaff, believe it or not. And, um, they have a parade every year that's a lot like Flagstaff. And, um, a- and the, uh, there in Grass Valley, I, I actually helped, um, man the ca- did I help man? I used to help man some cameras there and, and do, I did some directing, uh, for a local company there. And, um, it was fun, it was interesting. And, um, so anyhow, I, they, they actually, uh, video shoot the whole parade every year and then air it on local access, uh, television. They do live to tape editing, um, they put all the credits on, they edit it on the fly. And by the time the parade is over, the, the video for, for the parade is ready, good to go. They shoot it over to the, to the, um, to the local cable access television, uh, station and they air it, uh, right away. So, uh, and it, and we used, we used to do the football games, the basketball games, volleyball games, the wrestling matches, the, the, the baseball games. I mean, it was, it was just amazing, all the stuff that we used to, we used to do. Now, um, th- this new setup that they got with Facebook doing, uh, Facebook Live is, is off, off kilter. So I can't really tell, I don't know, I can't really tell if, uh, if, uh, who's on anymore. So thanks for stopping by whoever you are. They, um, I, I don't know, maybe they were on drugs and maybe they were high when they put this together. Cause I, I, I can't figure out who, who's on here anymore. But anyhow, um, so, um, so they're, they're not gonna be doing a parade here in Flagstaff. They're not, they're not gonna want, be doing one in Grass Valley where, where I went to high school at. And so the best thing to do is just hang out, I mean, there's no reason why you can't just hang out with your friends and just have some fun. And, uh, and, and, uh, just hang out anyhow, right? So it's like that. Um, one of the things that I want, I, I, and, and this is, um, this is, um, I don't, I don't wanna say tongue-in-cheek because I got full-scale evidence of, of, of some, some crap going on with ClickFunnels. I don't know if, if you know who Click, or what ClickFunnels is with, uh, Russell Brunson. But, but you know, if you really like the, the company and like what they're doing and like what, what, then I, you know, go for it. But I, if, if you pay for something, it's a pain in the ass to get your money back from these people. Uh, you know, I, 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 I paid for an event, uh, they locked me out of the event. And then they turned around and, and they still haven't refunded me the money, last I checked. So not cool, and this is like, what, three weeks ago, almost three weeks ago or so? And they still haven't refunded my, my money, which is not cool at all. So anyhow, um, again, if, if you're, 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 you're comfortable with these people. And that's the other thing about these, this, I, I, I have done some business with these people. I have done some ClickFunnels and I, I didn't feel like I got the best customer service from these people. I don't know if it was a prejudice thing because I'm not Mormon, cause I'm Mexican, I don't know. But it, it felt like a prejudicial thing, uh, not cool. And, and, um, i- again, if, if you don't, uh, have any doubts at all about doing business with these people, then I, I would recommend not, um, not doing any business. I mean, don't pay them anything and just, just, uh, go somewhere else. But, cause again, I, it's, it, they're giving me a hard time about giving, getting my, uh, refund. They're giving me a hard time, uh, again, when I was doing the ClickFunnels, they were, they were, they were giving me a hard time about that. Uh, so ju- it, I just wouldn't recommend doing any business with them if you, if, if you're, you have doubts. Um, now the second stimulus check, they're talking about a second stimulus check. And from the research that I did, um, first of all, Trump definitely wants, wants to give people a stimulus check. Uh, he, I think he's on board with that. And in fact, he wants people to get more than $1,200. So that's gonna be interesting to see how this is gonna work out. But, um, all the, the government took a, took a break and took a vacation. They're on vacation right now, I'm pretty sure. And until after the 4th of July weekend and maybe later than that, maybe for another week or two, I'm not sure. I don't, I don't, I don't remember all the particulars. But, um, they're not gonna vote or, and decide upon that until, uh, the third, probably third or fourth week of July. So if, if we do get a second, a second stimulus check, um, we'll find out towards the end of this month. And then, uh, we'll, we'll go from there anyway. And if, if the, the Senate, Republican Senate, which are, are completely being assholes about it, um, uh, decide they don't want to, uh, vote, and they decide that they want to vote against it, then, then they're gonna have to restructure. But we're, we're going into this pandemic in, uh, into July. They definitely should consider and they, they probably should, uh, provide people with another stimulus check. Because a lot of people are having a hard time, a lot, uh, they're, they're saying, oh, well, yeah, they, they had a lot of, of, uh, jobs that came up this, this month or, or a, a lot last month, I should say. Uh, but you know, with fake news going on and people and the media bullshitting people, you know, who, who, who do you trust? Who do you call, right? Ghostbusters? Ha! Try again. But anyhow, it's like that. Um, there's still needs to be a lot of, a lot of, uh, stuff coming out, come out that, um, really needs to be dealt with. Um, oh, I forgot, I was gonna put this on Instagram, timeout. Um, alright. Well, well, first of all, let's flip this. Oh, yeah. And then, I'm gonna put this on Instagram. I'm gonna go live on Instagram too. So, uh, we're telling your followers that you've started a live video. Okay, so I started, I'm also on Instagram here as well. And then, uh, later on, I'll put this on YouTube as well, so you can check this out. And then, um, um, I'll put this all over, on all of my pages on, on, um, Facebook as well, so. Anyhow, um, the stimulus check, don't hold your breath yet, but, uh, we'll, we'll know better at the, towards the end of this month. Now, um, I do, now this is, this is kinda big, um, the N double A C P, the, hang on, let me tell, let me, let me do this again. Timeout. The National Association for the Advancement of Colored People, well, people called me up. They literally called me, um, what about it? I, I, I was gonna do this, this live, uh, video earlier because, because of that. But, um, I just didn't get around to it till tonight. But, but anyhow, the du- N double A C P had a huge, um, town, virtual town hall meeting. Um, when was this? Uh, let me see. Tw- June 21st? Uh, I guess it was on June 21st or tw- twenty-first. I take it back, uh, no, I think it was on Wednesday, the 24th of June. But anyhow, um, they called me and asked me if I wanted to, to join, uh, the, the how- town hall. And so I s- I agreed and they did, they called me. Um, they had, um, Sonny Hostin, who's, um, uh, an award-winning lawyer, columnist, journalist and television host, uh, hosting the, the meeting. Um, and then they had a, they had, uh, I believe they had, um, President Derek Johnson, uh, and CEO of the N double A C P, uh, present there. They had other people there. Um, I'm not sure if they had, uh, Bom- Bombadjan, Bamba actor, a, a black, also Black Panther, um, who I actually met years ago, um, um. But in, in fact, I just posted a thing about this, um, on, 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 um, or I'm, I'm about to post something about this on Instagram, on the stories a- area. But, um, but back in 1992, April, uh, I, I was literally, um, I, 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 I had just graduated from, from, um, from college, from, uh, and then I, I went to California. No, I take it back, I, I had just graduated from here at Northern Arizona University. And I knew I had to go to California, so I did. And then I, 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 I was gonna hitchhike to, um, to Los Angeles. I was in Northern Arizona at the time. And so I might, I, I, I told, I said this to my mother, I said, I'm, I'm gonna hitchhike to, to, uh, to Southern California, for whatever reason, I need to be there. So, um, and again, this was like back in March, maybe? And, uh, she goes, well, no, don't, don't, don't do that, I'll, I'll give you, I'll give you the money and you can, you can, uh, I'll buy you a, a bus ticket to, to Los, Los Angeles, a one-way ticket. So I said, okay. So I did, I, I, I arrived in Los Angeles. And right before I got there, the Pope, the, the, whoever was the Pope at the, at the time was, was, um, had just visited Los Angeles, I think, two weeks prior to, or something like that, I can't remember. But anyhow, so I did, I got some lodging at a temporary, um, shelter there in Los Angeles, li- literally on the east side of LA. And, um, I, I just made myself at home and I, I, I was in, I, I went to Beverly Hills. They had a, a peace center there, the, a, a center that literally did, um, did all kinds of, of legal work and stuff for, for, to, to promote peace. So I was there and I was just volunteering and just hanging out. And I had just gotten a job for, um, for working at, 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 at a little place there in Beverly Hills. And I was, uh, supposed to, um, um, start, start right, uh, the, the, the day, the, let me see. The day they had the, um, why can't I remember this guy's name? But, um, um, uh, why, 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 why? Anyhow, uh, Rodney King, the, uh, the, uh, the night of the riots, riots that, that, that the riots took place for the Rodney King riot in April 1992. Uh, the night before, I, I, I went to bed early because I had to go to my job, my new job, early, or early in the morning the next day. So it was, it was wild, it was like totally bewildering, it was just out of this world. Um, I, I went there and, um, I, um, I went there and, and, uh, I, I went to bed early, got up early in the morning and I grabbed the bus, literally I gr- I grabbed the bus the next morning, like about six o'clock in the morning or seven o'clock, I can't remember. But anyhow, I was, my mouth was just like, like wide open cause I just couldn't believe all the crap that was going on. We, the bus went right downtown Los Angeles, really, literally right downtown. And there was glass everywhere, there was water spouting out everywhere, there's change, there, there was these, um, bars that were completely torn up. I mean, it, it would ju- it was just wild and there, it was like a ghost town, there's nobody around already at all. And you, you heard these alarms, la-la-la-la-la, going off, oh, wow, I was just blown away. So anyhow, um, um, I got to, to my job and the first thing we, we did was board up the windows because this guy was flipping out, tripping out because he thought, you know, that we're, that he was gonna be, uh, mugged or something, I don't know what. But anyhow, um, we boarded up the, the windows of the place and then he goes, well, you guys can go home now. So, uh, 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 right across the street, there was, um, the peace center where I was working at, uh, doing volunteer work. And so I went over there and, and these guy, and there was guy, there was people there that were just like, wow, they, they were, um, they, they, at the places they lived at, at their apartments where they lived at, they, um, they, they were like, well, I gotta get home because we gotta, we gotta, they, they, they literally took turns on doing security. They had guns and all this, all this stuff and all this shit. And they, uh, uh, and people from the, their apartments, whoever lived in the apartment complex, were taking turns doing security, right? And so, uh, and, um, and then in fact, that, that night, I didn't even make it home because, because the buses stopped running. And so this woman was kind enough to let me stay at her place and we looked over her balcony and wow, we could just see smoke, dark smoke everywhere, fire engines, rrrr, all night long, rrrr. And, um, the thing that was significant about that whole event that, um, that, um, that made it, uh, worth my while and time effort, I, I effort, I guess, was that, um, that we, we did peace walks. We did, we went, I went to some vigils, some peace walks, some, um, uh, they, they did some cleaning up. Uh, I went and helped, uh, do some cleaning up. Um, aloha, gal- galactic grandmother, thanks for stopping by. Um, so I, I went, um, anyhow, I, I went, um, and we did all kinds of stuff, I met all kinds of people there. Um, I don't, I don't wanna say Snoop Dogg, um, that director, Spike, Spike Lee, is that his name? Anyhow, I met all kinds of people there, it was just, just wild. So anyhow, um, I got there in March, like towards the end of March or middle of March. And, uh, we, we, everything just, and, and it wasn't like, like today, like, like, you know, today, I mean, this, and, and this, all this rioting going on here, it wasn't anything like, it was a lot more calmer, a lot shorter, it, it only lasted, uh, that, that one night. And, 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 um, and maybe they did a little bit more rioting after there, but it wasn't, it wasn't a huge news, uh, if they did. And then, uh, and, but it, it, time was spent healing, people healing and coming together and working together and, and resolving issues instead of, uh, making new ones and, and so forth. So it, it was, it was, but, and, and, and I'm not saying that the time now is being spent, uh, in, in a, in a really, um, bad way because there's, there's a lot of changes that are taking place, uh, even now. Uh, and, and you know, that was what, 30 years ago almost? And, and still, um, there's a lot of changes that had been needed and needed to be made even back then and still hadn't been made. And po- probably a lot of them have been finally made, but there's still a lot, a sto- a lot that humanity has to process and go through and work through and, 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 um, you know, cause in the future, uh, uh, lawyers were, are probably gonna be automated. Uh, the, the, everything is gonna be like you, computer, uh, computerized, uh, computer autom- automated. And decisions for, for court hearings and all that are gonna be made instantaneously by, by computers. And, and either you'll go to jail or you won't go to jail, you'll have to pay a fine, you won't have to pay, whatever. And so there won't be a, probably a lot of need for lawyers anymore, uh, in the fu- near future. And I say near future, um, and then probably, and, and, and now, this brings me back to, back to, um, I, I, I attended this meeting on, on the phone. I, I didn't get to hear all of it because they, they didn't call me right away. But they did eventually call me and I got to hear a lot of, a lot of, a lot of the, the, um, the meeting, uh, that was going on. And, um, you know, they, they had, uh, N double A C P had stated that, that they, uh, they were, they came in, stepped in, uh, against ICE uh, because ICE was, was taking advantage of people and, and not being professional. And so they took, they stepped in and, and, uh, they, they put a, a damper on ICE's behavior, you know, their professionalism. So, you know, a lot of the stuff that they were doing was bullshit and not cool at all. Uh, and again, um, I don't have anything against law enforcement, I don't have anything against government or anybody. As long as people are being professional, you know, they're doing their job, they're doing their, what they're supposed to be doing, then, then, um, then, then fine, I, I, I can live with that, I can, I, you know, I, I can live and breathe, uh, what I'm supposed to be living and breathing. And, 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 you know, without being made a slave, without being abused, without being taken advantages of, without being, uh, sto- stolen from, you know? If people are being professional, none of that happens. There's, there, there's no rea- reason to be, feel guilty, there's no reason to be, um, you know, be pissed for any reason at all. If, you know, and, and if people are being professional and I'm pissed, because, then, then it's on me because I'm, I'm not doing what I'm supposed to be doing. So it, it, it works, you know, both ways. So anyhow, I, I, I did try to, to, um, to intervene and, and, and do, and, and put out some information to these people who, who didn't wanna listen because as soon as I started talking, they, they cut me off. And I guess they felt like they had more important stuff to, to say. And not that they didn't have important stuff to say, but, but if they would've listened a little bit, maybe, uh, some of the information that I had for them could, could have been, would have been helpful. But, uh, you know, again, they, they just wanted to listen to themselves. And so maybe that, that's part of the problem of all this Black Lives Matter bullshit. And, and, and I say bullshit because people wanna listen to themselves, they don't wanna listen to the system. When you're talking about karma and universal law, you have to work with the system that's placed in front of you. You have to work with man-made law. And some of it i- i- is, is there for a good reason. And, and we may not like it, but it's there for a good reason. But I, I agree with Black Lives Matter too, because there's a lot of bullshit going on. And again, people are not being professional, they're, they're, they're in places of power and they're not being professional. And that's not cool at all, that's bullshit, that's, that's ego bullshit. So anyhow, some of the things that, that I, I felt that needed to be dealt with and understood about what's going on with the, uh, with everything that's going on, um, uh, let me see, up, up, I, I made a list of things, a, a public and, and I'll probably, what I'll do is I'll, I'll put this list in the, in the comment section so that you, way, that way you can read it to it later on. But anyhow, a public registry, oh, a public registry for abusive law enforcement personnel probably needs to be established and maintained, uh, regularly if it hasn't already been done so. So just like they have a registry for, for all kinds of other stuff, they need to have a, a website that, that shows all these, all these abusive, um, uh, law enforcement people, period. So, uh, uh, I, and I don't, I, I don't, I don't know that there is such, such a thing, but there definitely needs to be established so- uh, something of the sort, period. Um, I think, I, I, I went and did a little bit of research about, um, law enforcement, about defunding lo- law enforcement. And if, uh, uh, and, and maybe I'll, I'll do that too, I'll, I'll put the, the, the website. But there, there's, um, um, the, New Jersey years ago, a few years ago, defunded their law enforcement. They absolutely did and they found it to be very successful and it was much more economical and people were more in line. And again, uh, in the future, um, that's probably what's gonna happen anyhow because law enforcement, uh, i- is, is, is gonna be automated as well, through drones. I, I don't know if you've, if you've seen a lot of movies and of, of the future, but drones are taking over and, and, and that's what they're using to do in their investigations web. So if somebody's committing a crime, they're, it's all on video, right there on the spot and it, it's done and said. And that person that's doing the crime, um, i- i- is, is brought to justice immediately. So again, there's, there's no need for, for, for lawyers to come in and, oh, oh, this guy didn't do this, this guy did this, blah, 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 whatever, you know? There's so many attorneys out there, they're so full of shit, but that's besides the point. Um, and, and, and I'm sure there's a plenty of attorneys out there, um, that do, that are doing what they're supposed to be doing and they're being professional, uh, and we're gonna put, talk about one, uh, Saint Judy. Um, I can't remember, was it, was it Chicago? I don't remember, but anyhow, we'll talk about that in a little bit. But anyhow, um, attor- uh, again, attorney, attorneys are gonna be automated. Therefore, everyone will be subject to legal action, uh, uh, right away, uh, su- soon. In Mar- oh, now a lot of this, this stuff that's going on is, is, it's like the hurricane before the calm, before the peace, before the, the party, right? That's besides the point. Um, in, in, in the few, few years, in March 2020, 23, oops, I put 20. In March, uh, 2023, uh, when Pluto goes into Aquarius, a lot of this stuff is gonna be behind us. I can almost guarantee you 100%, that's what's exactly what's gonna happen. So a lot of this stuff that we, we, we're going through now, a lot of the bullshit, a lot of the ego shit that's going on, is gonna be behind us, like long, oh, long, long behind us, like permanently behind us. And we're gonna move on, humanity as a whole is gonna move on, I believe, to bigger and better things. I'm al- almost sure of it, 100%. When Pluto goes into Aquarius in March 2023, there's gonna, literally are gonna be a big, that year is gonna be a huge party. Huge, huge party, this pandemic is gonna be behind us, all kinds of stuff. Uh, Trump is gonna be behind us whether, whether we like him or not. Uh, and, and, uh, again, assumably, from what I understand, from what the predictions are, are, are saying, uh, he's supposed to be re-elected. And that's the other part of the equation that I wanted to tell these people from the N double A C P is that they may, i- 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 if that's true, saying that that's true, they need to get ready to, for whatever bullshit's gonna happen. Because if Trump goes back in the office, which again, it's, it's predicted, then that means they're gonna, they're gonna wanna get their, their Ts crossed, their Is dotted and everything, they're, they're gonna wanna be, get ready. Maybe not for a battle, but to deal with this guy in a good, professional way that'll be healthy for everyone. Not just for a few people, not just for a few black people, but for everyone. For minorities, for Caucasians, for even the KKK, period, right? So it doesn't matter where you're coming from, you know, i- i- it, the best plan of action is good, healthy relationships on all levels, period. Good actions, words and deeds. And if you want more, if you wanna know some details about right relationships, go to my website, spiritualimageproductions.com. Spiritualimageproductions.com, they're right there on the front page, there's, there's some information there that, that'll help you have some guidelines for right, healthy relationships. Aloha Claudia, thanks for stopping by. Um, so, uh, again, it's, it's just really that simple. I mean, there's some very basic guidelines for good, right, healthy relationships. If you go to my website, you, you'll read them there, you can see them there for yourself. If you maintain those, those boundaries, those, those, um, those, um, um, actions, words and deeds, you're gonna be fine. Uh, if, if everybody were to do that, everybody would be fine with, we'd be, it's, this planet would be so, so much different and so much better, uh, so much better off, we, we, I mean, like by leaps and bounds, period. Um, and again, uh, we talked about the drones. We, we, I mean, like by leaps and bounds, period. Um, and again, we talked about the drones will probably be, um, in constant surveillance everywhere, all over the world, probably not just the United States. And drones will be taking over as, um, as law enforcement. Um, it'll be cheaper, better and they'll have capabilities of audio, video. And if a crime's being committed, there's not gonna be any doubt. If they have capability of, 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 um, what's that called? Identifying a face, oh, face recognition, if they have capability of high level, hi- high-end face level, um, face rec- recognition, you can bet this, that our society is gonna be a whole lot different. So anyhow, uh, unfortunately, I didn't get to, 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 um, talk to these people about some of the stuff going on. I think it'd be, uh, at, at least some of this information will be really helpful for this. Um, Natasha James, Attorney General for New York, uh, Rachel Rollins, District Attorney for Massachusetts, uh, Marilyn, um, Mosby, State Attorney, uh, State's Attorney for Baltimore, Maryland, and Alfred, Alfreda Robinson, President of National Bar Association, were all present there. Um, uh, it was a very interesting meeting, um, I think, and they only had it for about an hour, uh, which wasn't enough time for, to really, really, um, talk through some, some things, but uh, I'm assuming they're, they're just working with it. So anyhow, um, let me see, again, you can go to, uh, NAACP.org and get more information if you want that, and, um, go from there. Now, um, first of all, the coronavirus update for, within the last, what, two weeks, week or so, um, they're, they're saying that, that there's, um, things aren't getting much better. I think there's probably several states that, that are, 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 the, the virus uh, problem is, is, is the pandemic is, is, is finally starting to wean out and go away, but there's still several, um, states out there that are, that, that, they're, they're still having a hard time. Um, now, it's interesting 'cause I'm looking at a map of the coronavirus cases, uh, virus cases across the United States. And California, Texas, Florida, um, and a lot of the, and several of the eastern states, uh, there's like, actually two other eastern states. It looks like Maine, I can't tell. And there's another one, um, oh, Illinois, really, Illinois, and New York. Um, those five states, California, Texas, uh, Florida, Illinois and New York, and also Pennsylvania are the worst-hit states right now. Um, I know here in Arizona, um, Arizona is, is next in line, uh, Arizona, um, Louisiana, Georgia, North Carolina, Virginia, Pi- uh, well, Penns- well, what's this other state? Oh, New Jersey, really, New Jersey, uh, is one of the worst-hit states, um, along with, uh, Massachusetts and New York. Uh, anyhow, there's one, I can't really tell. Okay, New York. What's this little shit state? Oh, that's part of New York, okay. Alright, so New York, Illinois, Florida, Texas and, um, California are the worst-hit states right now. So if you don't have to go to those areas at all, um, just stay away. I mean, that's the simplest solution, right? Just stay away and, um, and, and don't bother because why go, why, why, you know, put yourself in a situation when, when you don't have to be? So, um, in the meantime, again, Arizona, um, Louisiana, Georgia, North Carolina, Virginia, uh, Pennsylvania, uh, Ohio, Michigan, and yeah, Michigan, that's Michigan too? Anyhow, Michigan, those states, and what's this, this, this little, Maryland, Maryland? Also Maryland are the next in line to be, be, um, have, have the highest population of coronavirus cases. So again, if you don't have to go to any of those states, don't do it, just stay home. Now, I know here in Arizona, I don't know about all the other states, but, um, and I don't know if it's world, uh, uh, country, country mandated, uh, USA mandated, but, but, um, I know here in Arizona, you have to wear a mask in all establishments, wherever you go. And I don't know that you have to wear a mask on, uh, you know, while you're on the road or whatever, but, um, but if you go into any, 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 uh, business establishment, you have to wear a mask. Every, and you've, everybody out there, restaurants, stores, whatever, they have a sign. You, you have to wear a, a mask in order to enter this, this establishment. So, so, and, um, and even if you don't have to, especially if you're in one of these states that, that the coronavirus is a really bad, uh, wear a mask anyhow. Do yourself and other people a favor, you know, uh, that, you know, if you're, we're talking suicide, we're talking about murdering other people. Ju- ju- just wear a mask anyhow, ki- uh, it, better safe than sorry, right? It's just really that simple. So, um, again, they're talking about that, this pandemic, uh, going on through all of July, at least all of through, uh, July. So, uh, and, and today it rained here, it literally poured here in, 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 uh, in, um, Flagstaff. And again, they're saying that cold, the cold is what is causing a lot of this stuff. Aloha Ir- Ir- Irina, thanks for stopping by. Um, so it, it's, um, it's, it's cold. Um, you know, they're saying that the coldness is what's actually setting off this virus. So I, I don't know how, how, um, how, um, you know, all, all the ins and outs of this virus, but, but if that's the correct, then, then there may be more, more cases, uh, increase of cases here in, here in this area. I don't know, but we'll, we'll find out anyhow. Uh, regardless again, and if you do get the virus, uh, again, drink some hot tea, went maybe with some lemon and, and, and some, uh, honey and, um, also put some, some vicks on your, on your chest and your throat and maybe even some in your nose and your sinuses so that it'll help with your breathing. So, uh, again, if, if you're having problems at all, do, uh, if you think there's some kind of doubt, then immediately take action to start to, to help, uh, to work with, um, preventing it or healing it right away. So, you know, don't take any chances, especially if you're an older person. Uh, and they're saying especially people with, with diabetes, but I don't know. I guess we'll find out soon enough. So anyhow, um, Sunday is the full moon, uh, so we'll, we'll be doing a meditation. I'll, I'll be posting, doing a post for that, uh, putting out some information about that. So, um, it'll probably be from seven to nine PM on Sunday night. It's not gonna be a special full moon necessarily in a sense of speaking, but it is gonna be a full moon on Sunday. And so, seven to nine PM, um, California time, Pacific time, uh, I'll be, will be doing a, uh, full moon meditation. And again, I'll be put, if you want some information, you can go to spiritualimageproductions.com. On the left-hand side at the bottom, there's a link that says, uh, Transmission Meditation on there. You can get information about that, uh, that there. And I would definitely, it's, I, it doesn't matter if you're a veteran or not, or beginner, if you're, you're doing this meditation with me on Sunday, I, I would strongly, I would, no, I, I, I would almost demand, but I would definitely recommend watching the intro, uh, video on that page, on the Transmission Meditation on the air page on my website. And, um, that'll give you the ins and outs of, of all that. So anyhow, um, there's probably other stuff that I can probably cover, but right now, I'm just gonna go into movie mode. Um, movie critic mode. Um, let me see, and again, I'll, I'll put a lot, some of the stuff I'll, I'll be putting on, on my, on my, um, page for, for this video so that you can go back over. Um, there's a number of movies. Now, it, it, again, there's one, two, three, four, or, or one, two, three. There's at least three movies. Actually, there was four, but one of them, one, uh, one of the movies that I watched that was a, a, a true story movie wasn't that great. Um, it was, it was interesting, but it wasn't a, a, a two thumbs up. Typically, when I watch a movie that's a true story movie, they're usually good movies and, and, and you know why? Because there's details that are, are put into the movie that you wouldn't get from, uh, at all. Cross post to more pages. What the hell are you talking about? Anyhow, um, so, um, there's a lot of movies that, you know, that are out there. And the reason that, that, that they're not so great and they're not so hot most of the time is because they don't put in detail. It's like, I used to tell my friend, she's, um, she's an artist and, um, you know, I'd look at her paintings, she had some really incredibly nice stuff, but compared, uh, you know, if you looked at her work, that would be worth eight, nine hundred dollars, a thousand dollars compared to another piece that was same or similar, that, uh, that was worth twenty-five, fifty thousand dollars. It was because of the amount of detail that was in that painting. It's the exact same thing with movies. There's, the details aren't as refined as, aren't as finite with movies a lot of times uh, as they are, you know, just regular general movies as they are with, with, uh, true story movies. They, they have more finite details in them and that's what makes them so much more interesting most of the time than not. So anyhow, the first movie that I, I, I came out, I, I, I watched, whoa, not that, that I watched, but the first movie that I'm covering is My Spy, uh, that just came out, uh, last year. Uh, and it's currently available on Amazon Prime, if you've got Amazon Prime. Oh man, that was such a hilarious movie. Oh, if you want a good laugh, and it's, this is like a family movie, right? You can, um, you can watch it with the kids and grab some popcorn and some sodas and go, go watch it with a fan. If you wanted a good laugh, oh my god. Dave, oh, and I was gonna look this guy up. I don't know if this Dave Bautista guy is, is, um, a wrestler, ex-wrestler like, you know, The Rock is or whatever, but I have a feeling he is, 'cause this guy is a big, big dude. And then he goes up against this little scrawny little, uh, girl, uh, what's her name? Um, I don't know if it's Chloe Coleman or Christian Schell, but anyhow, this, this little girl, um, she, he goes up against her, right? He's, he's like the CIA agent and, um, and there, the, he, he, he screws up his assignment, you know, at the beginning of the movie, he screws up his mission. And he kills all, all the witnesses, right? Uh, all these gangsters, these, these hoods, the, these, um, these people that are, that are terrorists or whatever. He kills them all instead of, instead of at least bring one in alive so they, they can get some information about him. So the, the, the supervisors back at, back at the homestead are all pissed off and, you killed everybody, right? So, so they give him a new jo- a new assignment. They, they, um, they go and actually, it's all connected 'cause they have a big mission and some of it's located in, I don't know, some terrorist area or whatever. And then, and then some, the other is, is, is in Chicago. I can't remember where this place is at. Anyhow, they, they have this, him and this woman, uh, this, this, uh, woman, that she's, she's not usually put out in the field 'cause she's a, she's a, she's a clerk, right? She's an office hand. So anyhow, they put them together and they throw, throw them out in this place and they, they have to spy on this, this mom, um, is it Chloe Coleman or Christian Schell? I don't know, but anyhow, they, they have to spy on them. And they have all this computer equipment. They go in there, they sneak in and put all these cameras in there, right? In, in, in their place. And so, um, so they go in and the little girl catches them, right? She, she's like, she has her, and, and you know, this is how, this is how technology is these days, right? They, they go in and, and she, she has her camera. She's video shooting them. She walks into their, their off, their, their little spy office or whatever and she's going, you guys came into her apartment, blah, 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 blah. She's like, I caught you red-handed and he, and, and Dave Bautista's like, oh, uh, you need to hand over that camera to me, that phone to me right now, little girl, blah, blah, blah. And she goes, I won't, I, I, I will delete this, I won't do anything with it if you teach me how to be a spy. But, and, and of course Dave just goes, okay, fine. Well, if, um, I'll teach you how to be a spy, but, but that's it, once and that's it. So she, she's going, pinky promise, okay, so he, pinky promises her, so. Anyhow, it goes on from one, from one, from one episode, one, one, uh, um, event to another. Oh my god, it's funny as hell. If you want a good laugh, uh, and, and you got your kids with you, oh, they'll probably laugh right with you. I'm sure of it. So anyhow, uh, Ken Young, uh, Greg Burke, um, Parissa Fitz Henley uh, are also in, in this movie. It came out last year. So hilarious, oh my god. And the suspense is like, this girl's got, you know, Dave Bautista on his tippy toes. Oh shit, what, what do I do now? What, what did I do? So anyhow, uh, he, um, he, um, he has the hots for her, her mother, right? And she's like, she's coaching him on how to date her mother, her mother, so anyhow. Uh, I definitely recommend that movie with your family without a doubt. Uh, Hooking Up, now. This is, this came out last year. Um, let me see, what, what's this? We can get rid of this now. Uh, timeout. This came out last year, uh, oops, no. With, um, Jordana Brewster, Brittany Snow and, um, what's that guy's name? Um, Sam Richardson. And then also Anna Akana, Amy Peet, uh, Vivica A. Fox are also in this movie. Um, this was an, a, a very interesting, different kind of movie, um, very interesting. And you know, it, it's, it's interesting because if, if, if you don't, oops, what, timeout, oh, there we go. If, if, um, if you don't understand sexuality, I think maybe that's a good word, if you don't understand the polyamorous and that's, it's interesting 'cause I, I found, I managed, I, I, I happened to watch like two or three other movies that had to do with polyamory. And I don't know if you know what polyamory is and it has, it has to do with having more than one partner, being involved with more than one partner. Which I believe is gonna be the wave of the future because that's the way, what Aquarius, the Aquarian Age is all about. Uh, the Piscean Age is all about monogamy, whereas the Aquarian Age is all about polyamory. Um, it's, it's just, that's just the way the energies are. So I believe that, that more and more, uh, people are gonna be involved in more and more polyamorous relationships. And they'll be healthier rather than just being in swingers. And I don't know that I, that they're, that swingers, I, I believe that lots of swingers don't fol- follow good practices, but there, there's a lot of them, I think they do as well, so. Um, but anyhow, um, this Brittany Snow ha- has this, this thing going on with her relationship with her mother, which causes her to be a sex addict. So she's in this, uh, sex addict meeting and she runs into Sam Richardson, uh, and, and right before she, she's, she screws the, the guy that, that's in charge of the meeting. She, she's screwing him at the very beginning, right? And she get, she gets off and then, okay, I'm done, see you later, and walks away and leaves, leaves him hanging, right? So, uh, that was hilarious. And so he, he happens to be the one that's in charge of the meeting. And so she goes to the meeting, there he is. Oh, she goes, oh, just, just sign me, sign this and I'll get out of here 'cause otherwise this is gonna be uncomfortable for both of us. And he's like, nope, you're gonna stay here and you have to go through the meeting, right? So anyhow, Sam Richardson has, has can- testicle cancer in, in his left nut, right? Left, um, testicle. And so, um, now, and now he has, uh, uh, and, and when he comes in, he, all of a sudden, he, he goes for another checkup and he find, come to find out he has cancer in his right nut, right? Oh darn, whatever, whatever. But anyhow, so anyhow, they come up with this idea, they're sitting there talking. Well, why don't we just go and, and have sex in all the different places that, that you had sex with other people? And ma- and maybe that'll be therapeutic and healing for you. So Sam, of course, goes, oh, okay. And, 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 uh, at one point, they're going, they're, they're going, well, both of us say how many people we've had sex with? How many partners we've had sex with? And he goes, two. And she goes, a hundred and sixty-nine. And he's like, what? And he's like, what? And she goes, well, who was your, who were your two lo- sex partners? Well, my girlfriend that I broke up with a little while ago. And you, and she was the second one. So anyhow, they go on this this um. This um, journey. To all these different places having sex and. And they end up uh they end up at um, at um. Back, yeah, part of the agreement was that they have to go to Dallas, Texas. Where his ex-girlfriend is gonna have a big party. For whatever reason, I can't re- oh, I I I'm I. I can't remember what the the party was for, but anyhow, they had it, they were having a big party. So they attend the party and um. And um. She she, he just goes off and she goes off and she says. Screw you and leaves, right? And so, so anyhow, um. She leaves and she goes to her mom's and visits her mom. And they talk things out and talk things through and then. And then um. And then finally, they they end both end up back in Chicago or wherever they are, you know, they are. Uh for at the beginning of the movie. And um. They decide that she's gonna, she's gonna be celibate or abstinent, I'm not sure. Abstinence is where you don't have sex with anybody. You might masturbate, you might play with yourself, might might self-play with yourself. Self-play, but you you don't have sex with anybody, whereas abstinence is you don't. You don't do anything, you're completely virginal. For ti- period of time or whatever. So anyhow, she I she this decides she's gonna be abstinent or or um. Or without a without a partner for for a year and then and then they'll go out and ha- ha- and get together, so. So that's how it ends at the very end. Uh interesting ending, uh um. But um, uh just a funny, a funny movie to watch. Um, and I don't know that you wanna watch that with the kids, but. That's up to your discretion, right? Um, Saint Judy, this is the movie that I was talking about earlier. Oh, my god, that was an interesting movie. Timeout, timeout, let me get, go over there. What? What what happened to Saint Judy? Uh anyhow, it's actually a true story. With um. Uh Michelle Monaghan, Lynn Lubani, uh Carmen. Alfred Molina, Ben Schnitzer, Alfred Woodward and Kevin Chapman. A very, uh, I would, I highly recommend, especially. If you're in, you're involved with legal situations, legal stuff and stuff or whatever. I would definitely recommend it um and um go from there, but. But um. This woman, she's she's a Pepperdine. She's a a and this woman. Again, it's a true story from Pepperdine comes in. And I can't remember where this this took place at. But wherever it took place, I I think it was one of their southern states or something like that. But anyhow, she comes in and. And she works, she starts working for a big law firm, right? And um. Somehow, something she screws something up, something gets screwed up. And he fires her, yeah, the big guy fires her. So she goes and starts her own, her own place and she's, I I believe she's. No, she was married and I I don't remember, I don't, I I don't know if they were clear about it, but. The they were divorced or they were separated and the husband was living somewhere else and she had the kid. Uh 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 with her and um. So anyhow, she's she goes and and starts uh talks to this one girl. Who I believe was Pak- Pakistani, I don't remember, but. But um, I don't, I I I don't know if that was clear or not, maybe it was, but I just don't remember. Anyhow, this girl, they have her in in prison because um. She didn't. I I she what, she didn't. Um, have her passport or some, I can't remember what, but anyhow, they had her in prison. And and so she goes and talks to her and but at this case, she got from the original. Law firm that she was working with. That she picked a case and she went and talked to her and started started to really get involved with the case and. And this guy's going, well, no, you can't do that, you have you have just just claim it as as. Close, close case or whatever. And 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 be done with it, we need to make money. And she she refused to listen to him, right? She goes. Well, no, there's more to this case than than you're 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 trying to believe. So so he, so she does, she goes and talks to the to the victim, uh to the client. And um, and when she gets fired, she she stays on with that case. So anyhow, apparently, this this girl was was a teacher in this other country, she was teaching kids. How to read and all that, and in that country, they didn't want women learning how to do all that, you know, they're full of shit, right? So so um, she she goes, no, and and so she. Basically revolts against against the country. Saying, I'm gonna teach these kids and they need to learn how to read and write, blah, 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 blah. And so they do, they put her in in jail and then they rape her, like, I don't know, three or four. Um. Cops ra- rape her. And then and then somehow she she gets out and she ends up in the United States, right? She escaped somehow. Um, and then um. And then the 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 United States wanna send her send her back, again, this is a true story. So. Saint Judy. Starts to represent her and talk to her and work with her. And they finally go to court and the 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 woman, the the judge is a woman. She goes, well, I I I I I respect you and and you know, and applaud you because you of what you're doing. But I I can't let you go because because there's um. There's a clause that lets. Um. People of 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 crime that are victims of crime in other countries stay. But because you're a woman and 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 even though this is not, they're not considering her situation, her case of crime. She she has to go back to back to her country. So finally, they they end up um, they end up with a um loop, a hole in in the system. And that she uh she takes, Ju- Judy takes the case to the Supreme Court. And at first, the the girl that was the victim, um, or the the. The client didn't wanna talk about the rape because she was embarrassed and ashamed, right? But come to find out that the her uncle or somebody, the exact same thing happened to him. And he had never told anybody up up until uh up until then and told her about it. So now it's not a vi- a crime against women, it's a crime against people. Which shifted the whole case around and then they were able to take it to Supreme Court. And win the case and so she got to stay and uh help all these other people, so. Now, very intense movie, very interesting and wow. You know, the the amount of. Of pressure this girl was under was amazing, just amazing. So anyhow, um, The Big Sick. Came, oh, and that came out, that movie came out in two thousand eighteen, The Big Sick came out in two two thousand seventeen. Yeah, actually, this is the second time I've watched this movie. And I can't remember if I I um. Rated that movie a one point five or not, but. But this time I ra- rated it a point, a two point, two thumbs up regardless, cause I I. I really liked the show. Again, this is a true story. Uh actually about Kumal- uh Kumail Nanjiani. Uh who is also in the movie, I believe he wrote the movie. Uh Zoe Kazan, this is a good movie for her. Um, uh and then she did a really good job. And then Holly Hunter and then Ray Romano, this was also a good movie for them to be in as well. So um, anyhow, um. These guys were um, uh thi- this this girl, well. Kumail is a Pakistani, Pakistani, right? So his parents want him to marry the a Pakistani woman, so they keep bringing women over. Inviting women over to visit him so they can hook up. But he doesn't hook up with any of them, any of them, and he's an Uber driver and he's also a comedian, right? Doing stand-up comedy, again, this is a true story, so um. So some, he does, at the beginning of the movie, he gets, uh he does a stand-up routine. And he ends up hooking up with Zoe, right? Uh, the uh his actual wife out later on. Um, uh and the the character was, well, became his wife later on, but anyhow, um. He uh he ends up hooking up with her and she she's like, oh, I gotta go home now. He goes, no, 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 you we haven't had sex again twice yet. Oh, no, no, I just have sex with uh uh people one time on the first date, sorry. So she calls an Uber and and it. It rings right, right to him, cause he's an Uber driver, right? She, he goes, well, let me put my pants on and I'll take you home, so she's, they're both laughing, right? So he takes her home and they get involved. And then uh later on down the road, she she, now, this is really, what's really interesting is that. That I I bel- and this is came out in two thousand seventeen, wow, this is very interesting. Because I I I went through the exact same episode, the whole trauma, the whole bullshit sit- situation. Um, as well, in that in that same year, I don't know when when this came out. But in that same year, February two thousand seventeen seventeen, I came down with pneumonia and the flu. And although they they said that she had something else um in in the movie. It was, they they did the exact same thing for um for her as as they did with me, they. They uh pulled fluid fluid out of uh my lung, my right lung and but yet they called it an operation and it really didn't seem much, but. Afterwards, after they did that fluid, oh my god, my body was sore all over the place. But anyhow, um, they did the same thing through to her. And but there was something else that they called it, that there was something else wrong, but anyhow. Uh she came, she came down with this this flu or whatever and they had to put her, put her in a coma. For several days and then finally, finally, because Kumail. Had told the doctors or the nurse or whatever, uh some kind of situation, something that was going on with her. About something about her ankle getting uh hurt and then sore and then it wouldn't heal or something, I don't know what, but. Anyhow, but because he he gave her, gave them that information, they were able to figure out what was wrong with her because. They were having a hard time trying to figure out what was wrong with her. So finally, uh she comes out of it and um. He um, they go through this whole episode with, well, he, oh, he does, Kumail goes this whole, through this whole episode. With Holly Hun- Hunter and her character and then Ray Romano, her his character. The the mom and dad of 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 Zoe's character and um. At first, she's like, you know, the mother's like pissed off, pissed off at him because they broke up, blah, 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 but you broke up with him. And uh and so anyhow, they end up, he ends up taking him to to uh Zoe's character's uh place. And they hang out there and then they go through all this stuff and then. Uh, they're gonna move, move uh Zoe's character to another hospital because they're going. Oh, this is the seventeenth hos- uh best hospital in the in the barrier. We need to go to Northwestern and we're the number one hospital in the in the state. And they're and and Kumail is going, no, no, don't take her, that that could be dangerous and. So finally, that they they ended up figuring out the problem with with um Zoe's character. Um, and so she ends up finally going home and and she was like, I was, I I had a hard time. Walking around, I I had a hard time uh just getting up and and I I couldn't even take a shower, I couldn't do do anything. Uh and even when I finally got home, um, cause I was like one week in in ICU. At the hospital uh here at Flagstaff Medical Center and then I was two weeks in the hospital. Um. Uh in general pop- population thereafter and then even when I got uh. Um, let go, released, I still had a hard time just walking around and. Uh it took me like a year and a half, two years or whatever to finally recover from that and. To this day, I don't know that I'm actually recovered from all that completely a hundred percent, but. But I'm doing a whole lot better, but anyhow, she, so she finally, um, Zoe, Zoe's character finally recovers and. And meantime, Kumail and and two of his other comedy buddies say, we're, well, he's, they go, well, we're going to New York and you you're coming with us. And Kumail is going, okay, so they go, they they go to New York and at the very beginning, you know, um. Zoe miles off, you know, right during during his set, during his comedy set. She miles off something, I don't know, blah, blah, blah. And then he comes over and talks to her and says, you shouldn't do that to comedians, you know, heckle them. Uh it doesn't matter if it's good or bu- good or bad. And she's like going, oh, even even if I say something like, man, this guy is good in bed. I mean, it's something like that, and he goes, yeah, you shouldn't even say that because that's still heckling, even though it's positive. So at at the very end, they they do the exact same routine, it's and and it's it's kinda funny, but. No, it is funny, but that's exactly mine. Anyhow, um, two thousand thirteen, Ender's Game, this this is the second time I've watched this movie. Harrison Ford, Oza Butterfield, Hailee Steinfeld, now, this was an interesting movie for her to be in. Uh Viola Viola Davis, Abigail Breslin, also for Abigail Abigail Breslin. And then Ben Kingsley, um, very intense movie, they're um, they're they. They had these um, uh uh in according to the movie, these aliens um attacked um Earth. Um, hang on a second, I'm I'm gonna. I I'm not sure if this is gonna. Gonna end right now or not, but I'm gonna end it right now. Well, I tell you what, I'm I'm just. I'm just gonna stay with it here on Instagram. And whenever it ends, it'll end and we'll leave it at that, but anyhow, um. So anyhow, Ender's Game, the the uh according to the movie, this, the aliens attacked the 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 planet Earth. And they they, you know, people, humans get slaughtered. And then somehow they they end up. Uh, beating them, oh, uh one one of the guys that 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 was um. I I don't know if he was a lieutenant or whatever, but anyhow, someone in charge. He went into this this the mothership and destroys the mothership and they, these aliens take off. So meantime, they have a a planet. Um, way far away and and they're monitoring it to to see if they're gonna. If they're gonna attack uh the planet or planet Earth again. So meantime, they're reto- cu- re- recruited, recruiting all these kids to um to. To uh. To grow up against these these aliens, right? Cause you know, the the kids are the future and and they they're they're, you know, whizzes, right? So so they they end up recruiting um. Oza Butterfield and uh who I I don't know, he's like fifteen, sixteen years old, whatever. And uh, or twelve years, I don't know how old he's in the movie, but. But anyhow, um, they recruit him and they put him through training. And and some of the other guys are like, because they have several several teams that they 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 brought in. To to train and and so they make him one of the the le- leaders, in fact. They they give him his own team and they recruit a bunch of people from from the other the other teams to be on his team. So anyhow, um. He somehow kicks all the other, cause they they have this ongoing uh competition going on. Um, and these exercises and he ends up kicking all these other asses of all these other teams. Um, and and um, so they they do, they take him to the next level, the next stage. And he uh, and and one of the reasons that he they select him is cause he's very sensitive, he's very conscious. And so, so anyhow, they start doing these training exercises and Hailee Steinfeld. Uh is part of part of that team. I can't remember Abigail Brett, I don't think Abigail Breslin was, she was on, oh, she's the sister of uh um of um. Of Oza Butterfield's character, right? Her her character is the sister of Oza Butterfield, so anyhow. They they send him home at one point because he's like freaking out. He doesn't know what to do and so finally, his his sister talks him into going back, back to the. The battlefield and and dealing because otherwise, you know, the whole planet might might get blown up. So anyhow, they do, they take him back, they go through these exercises. And finally, they get to the to the last day. And they and they go, well, if you if you succeed tomorrow, you you'll you'll um. You'll win. So what they didn't tell him, they, cause he thought it was just an exercise, right? What they don't, they don't tell him is that, at the very end, is it it's the actual true event, they have all these, all these um. Colonels and dignitaries or whatever, they're in the in the back. Uh watching him, watching these guys and so he's like. Directing all the all these people, all all his team. And to uh uh in battle against the these aliens. Which is actually a true battle, a real battle and 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 come come to find out that the the. Individual, the being, I guess if you wanna call it, that is like a big. Not not butterfly, um. But it it's in like a like a a insect or something like that, yeah, this is here, this is gonna go. Go um. We're just, we're just gonna, well, let's just end this video, let let it end on itself. But anyhow, um, it's some kind of insect is is the one, is the the being that's in charge of these aliens, you know, these all these alien beings. She's like a queen bee or something like that, right? A queen. So. O- Oza Butterfield's character is like doing all this stuff and and they do, um. They destroy, what what they end up doing is destroying, um. Why 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 can't you do that? Alright, we'll deal with you later, but anyhow, they destroyed the planet of all these aliens and um. Alright, we'll deal with you later, but anyhow, they destroyed the planet of all these aliens and um so they they um. They end up destroying the planet and and at the very end, you know, the the the. Harrison Ford is all, wait, yeah, Harrison Ford uh is is the the one that's his supervisor, right? He goes, well, you did it, you you, this was a li- real life event and you you killed all these pe- be- ma- aliens and they're never gonna come back and. Destroy us ever again and he's like, he's going, what? He's like, like his mouth is like, ah, what are you talking about, this was a real event? You can't you 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 can't do that to me, so anyhow, he feels sorry for the for the queen, the queen bee or whoever she is. And he goes and 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 grabs her, I I don't know, grabs her egg or something. And and uh takes off into the into the unknown and actually that sets sets it up for another movie, but. But uh it that's undetermined, so the ending was kind of cheesy, um, but it's it was still a pretty intense movie. Um, Friends with Kids, now this was a very interesting movie, um. Um, here, hang on, let me see, timeout, let me go to that. Saint Judy, uh oh, that's what it did. Yeah, that was a really intense movie. But it was interesting to see the technology involved uh with that movie. Mighty Max, what? You idiot. No, not yet, oh, here it is. Timeout. This was a very, when was, when did it come out? Two thousand twelve, really, eight years ago, but it was it was a very progressive movie. Uh it was it was interesting, again, this this is this is a a another polyamorous movie, if you want to call it that. Um, where these friends, uh Adam, the this came out in two thousand twelve, Adam Scott, Jennifer Westfield. Uh Maya Rudolph, Chris O'Dowd, uh Kristen Wiig, Jon Hamm, Megan Fox, Edward Burns, it it had a pretty good uh cast in there. Um, but it was again, very progressive in that um that these people. The these these friends, the you know, they're, I think they became friends um in in college, I think that's where they they hooked up at. Uh Adam Scott and Jennifer Westfield, they're friends and all the other friends are married, right? So so they're all married and um they um. They're the only ones that don't get married and but they've been friends forever and they never, I don't think they ever got involved with each other intimately. And somehow they they get on the on the topic of kids and they go, well, why not, why don't we just have a kid? You know, we'll have sex o- once or twice or whatever, whatever it takes and then and we'll get you pregnant and we'll have a kid. And so they both commit to 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 the kid and she falls in love, like like and deeply in love with this guy. You know, with Adam Scott and and um he keeps screwing around with all, every every time they have a gathering. He always has a new girlfriend, right? So finally, he ends up getting involved with um Megan Fox, you know, they have the kid and it's his turn to take care of the kid. And he's out with a stroller right at the parking lot and and he's hitting on Megan Fox, she's like running and they start talking and he starts hitting her. And she's like, what are you hitting on me, you've got a kid right there, wh- what are you stupid, you know, that type of thing. And uh and so anyhow, they they end up getting involved and of course, this is a Cinder- Cinderella movie. They at at the very end, they you know, they they finally get, they oh, they end up taking a a a trip, a a a vacation trip to some. Some cabin in the woods somewhere, I don't I don't know where, but but anyhow, all of them, all the couples end up there and and then of course, um. Uh Adam Scott and Jennifer Westfield and their and their kid go as well. And not not as a couple, but but they all they both have partners as well, so anyhow, um. Jon Hamm goes off the deep end, he's like, you guys are never gonna last, blah 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 blah, he just goes off the deep end, he's drunk. And so uh I think they they kicked his ass, I don't know what happened, but anyhow, he he is out of there, so he ends up divorcing. The um Kristen Wiig, who's who's the the wife in um uh the in in that in that movie. Uh so her character is the wife, so anyhow, um, at the very end, of course, Adam Scott and Jennifer Westfield. Finally end up uh finally get together and and uh they have sex for real instead of just for a kid, right? So, but you know, it that essentially. That's what sex is all about, about procreation. Back in the day, you know, when people were really, really spiritual or whatever, um. That was the only reason to have to have sex was to procreate. Which is the uh you know, the biggest main reason uh for having sex, not just for pleasure or or sport. Uh or whatever, um, revenge, you know, there's all kinds of reasons that people have sex, some of them are really stupid, but. And uh again, the the progressiveness with these this couple, these people. Being involved with other partners and still be able to have a kid too, again, that's all of queer and age uh concept uh perception. Consciousness, that's how peo- you know, people are gonna be living on on the space station, people are gonna be living on other planets. And you're not just gonna be able to go in there and say, oh, hey, honey, uh, I'll I'll see you on Mars in in a in a couple of days and we'll have sex then. No, it's not gonna be like that at all, you know, you you pe- people are gonna be liv- you know, living progressively. And have um uh two or three or four or more partners because they they're not gonna be able to just have sex. With their wife, their their husband or whatever, it's just, it's gonna be just like that. And already like that for a lot of people, there there's a lot of um uh and if you look, you know, check it out. There's a lot of actors already that are all doing the exact same thing already, they they have, they're married to Joe Schmo. But they have a partner, Joe Schmo and and Joe Schmo, you know, it's like they're already doing it, it's already happening. It's already out there, uh if again, and and I don't know, uh actors is the only. Uh group of people that I know of that you can see that happening with right there in front of your eyes. Uh other other groups, uh politicians, business people, I probably business people and of course swingers, duh, but that's besides the point. So anyhow, it's like that, um, The Mighty Max. Oh, Carla uh Ju- um, Gugino, Marlee Shelton, Ellen Burstyn, David uh Boran- Borions. Bor- Borinos, Bor- Borinos, um, two thousand eleven, um. Again, um, yeah, that was a true story movie, another true story movie, um, this this woman. Um, her character, uh Carla Gugion, uh Gugi- Gugino's character, um, they moved to. Uh, let me see if I can find it, timeout. The Mighty Max, good uh good movie if if you like basketball, especially if you like basketball, right, um. I don't know what 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 the location was for this for this uh movie, but but um. Carla Ju- uh uh Gugion, Gugino gets a job as a basketball coach at this Cath- I believe Catholic school. And um anyhow, she goes and you know, the the Catholic school just. It's not a major uh athletic school at all, right, duh, uh, so anyhow, she goes there and she tells the Mother Superior. Well, if the if I'm gonna coach, these girls have to be athletes, they they have to be wanna be there and do and do do the do, right, that type of thing. So and my and and mo- and the Superior Mother's going, oh, okay, sure, so so anyhow, they start um, they start um. Uh she starts coaching them and I believe Marlee Shelton, I I don't know if that's her name or not. Uh but anyhow, but one of the nuns ends up, uh she's like, she does, she's like, I don't know, do I really need to be here? You know, do I really need to be a nun, she's like questioning, so finally, Mother Superior goes, well, here, you you go help help uh. Carla, go help the coach, uh and and you know, with the ba- the girls. And and the meantime, the the school is is like in he- in in a big big huge situation, like big red flag, they're. They're getting ready to lose their status and they're getting ready to get closed down because because of funding, right? So um, so anyhow, Carla starts coaching them and and working with them and um. Pretty soon, they start winning their games and and pretty soon, I think they end up finding they end up at state. And I don't remember, because there's actually two movies that I watched that were same same, there was same plot, you know. Uh uh one was Navajo, oh, I think it was Navajo, uh Indian girls and then they have the the. The Catholic girls uh coach uh um movie, but anyhow, I I can't remember if they won or not. But but it helped, I I think they did win, but anyhow, they it hel- it helped um, helped them with their status, they finally got their funding back and. They got more students and they got uh, you know, the the basket- girls' basketball team became really big and blah blah blah, so. Very interesting movie to watch, a fun movie to watch, um, now, again. We're we're back into polyamory, uh in two thousand eleven, a good old fashioned orgy, right? So again, we're talking about pal- polyamory again, um. Hilarious movie, came out two thousand eleven, Jason Sudeikis, Sudeikis, uh Lake Bell, Michelle Borth. Lindsay Sloan, Angela Soffian, uh Soffian, Soffian. And anyhow, Leslie Bibb, uh Tyler Labine, um, Nick Kroll, David Cro- Kocher, Kochnar. Uh Don Johnson, oh, Don Johnson's in it, Martin Starr, uh Lucy Punch and Will Forte. Oh my god, uh the these these guys, uh J- Jason Sudis- Sudie- Liches, Sudeikis. I don't know, but anyhow, I apologize if I pronounce any of your names, that's besides the point, but um anyhow, Jason's character. He's a big party guy and then and since college, these people are getting together and partying and getting drunk and. Just terrorin- terrorizing the house and the house actually bego- belongs to Jason's father, his character's father, right? Uh who is who's Don Johnson and at the beginning, he's like. Sorry, son, but I'm I'm gonna be selling the house and then you look at his car and there's some young, some young chick in there, some young broad. Some young young female in there and um and and he takes off, right? And and he he goes, well, we have to have one more party before we before we uh before we leave leave the house, right? Before the house gets sold, so they they end up meeting the realtors, right, um, and um. He's like, we need to stall the realtors, right, so they won't sell the house till after the party, right? So you're like, okay, so they they uh he ends up hooking up with, um, there's like two realtors, one's a younger one and one's an older one. Come to find out, they they end up, they they end up going, doing some research for this this uh orgy to fi- figure out what, you know, what's the be- pl- best plan of action for an orgy, right? So they end up at this S and M place and come to find out the older. Realtor is is in the place, right, she's like cracking the whip, right? And the younger one, he uh Jason ends up going out with, he he ends up hooking up with her, right? So he can stall her, right, for from selling the place, so um anyhow, they 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 finally get the orgy going and. And um they go do all these ceremonies, all these different drinks, all this stuff and. And and they do do end up, they do end up doing the polyamory thing, changing partners and then um at the very end. I can't remember what happens at the very end, they um. Oh, they 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 finally do do the do the oh, oh, they they finally do the orgy thing. And then the very next day, they're all at breakfast and then they then they all go to the beach and and they live happily ever after, right, it's like that. Whatever, so anyhow, um, interesting polyamory movie, um, Grown Ups. Oh, now thi- this is came out two thousand ten with Adam Sandler, Selma Hayek, uh Penalt. Uh Kevin James, Maria Bello, Chris Rock, Maya Rudolph, uh Rob Schi- Schneider. Um, Joyce Van Patten, David Spade, Steve uh Vesemmy. Uh Colin Quinn, Tim Me- Meadows, Madison Riley and Jamie Chung. Oh my god, that's so, again, this is another movie for the family for the with the kids, you know, ten years old, teenagers, whatever. That if if you're a mom, you you this would be uh mom or dad, you you can you can probably watch this and and have have a good laugh. Um, Saddam Antler, uh Saddam Antler, I guess he's an antler, right, he's a he's a deer. Uh and the se- and the second grows up, that he does en- encounter a deer, man, that's funny, but anyhow, Adam Sandler. Uh and Selma Hayek, uh Penalt are are, you know, husband and wife, um, their characters are husband and wife. So they e- end up going to, you know, they haven't met, um, they have, you know, these kids, they grow up. And and at the very beginning of the movie, they end up winning some basketball game and they're and they end up going to this after party. With the coach and they they, you know, have they end up eating all this food and all this stuff that's happening. And so anyhow, and they haven't met since then, right, thirty years later, here they get they get hooked up together, you know. They're fatter, they're older, they're slower, they're, you know, they're like, ah, we're uh, take the kids and. Send them to babysitter, we're gonna go on vacation, but they bring the kids, everybody brings the kids, right? So anyhow, very interesting movie, very funny, hilarious, uh, the the uh the mom. Somebody's mom, oh, she's like an older lady, she's like, she cuts a fart and smells the whole place up, um. I mean, all kinds of shit, it's it's hilarious, but um anyhow, they they have um, they 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 have, you know. They catch up with old times and they play jokes on each other and all this stuff, it's it's just a a barrel of laughs if you want wanna. Watch that movie, I can't remember uh how it ends, how does it end, um. Oh, they uh Selma Hayek is is like this this designer, right? They have to go to parish or something like that for some kind of opening they're gonna do. And and they they have to, they have, you know, they're the the party's just for the weekend, what, Friday, Saturday and Sunday. And Selma's like, we we have to leave on Saturday morning, we we have to go to my my uh opening. And and then they go through all this series of stuff, you know, of of laughs, barrel of laughs and and. And she finally, she gets it, you know, family is much more important than than the job than work is, right? So so she finally goes, okay, honey, what do you wanna do tomorrow, we're gonna go and 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 do stuff and I'm. We're we're not, we're not leaving to- tomorrow or so, anyhow, they end up staying and they live happily ever after. Now, this is interesting, No Strings Attached, came out in two thousand ten? Interesting, um, no, it didn't come out in two thousand ten, did it? I thought it was two thousand eleven. Timeout, let me check this, let me double check this. I gotta check. I thought it came out in uh official Grown Ups trailer, no, 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 timeout. Yeah, yeah. Oh, no, it came out in two thousand ten. And then uh here, let me double check this because. A very interesting coincidence pattern is going on. That I noticed, I I I never even realized it until I looked this up earlier, um. Let me check this, just give me a second, um. Okay, here we go. That came out in in uh, No Strings Attached came out first in two thousand ten. And then the very next year, yeah, the very next year, Friends with Benefits came out. With Justin Timberlake and Myla Kunis and. In two thousand ten, No Strings Attached came out with Natalie Portman and Ashton Kutcher. Also Kevin Kline, Lake Bell, Greta Gerwig, uh Jake Johnson, Ludacris, uh Al- Olivia Thir- or Thurlby. Thur- yeah, Thurlby and and Mindy Kaling, so two thousand ten. Uh No Strings Attached comes out with Natalie Portman and Astro Kut- Ashton Kutcher and then the very next year. Exa- exact same plot, Friends with Benefits comes out, right? Well, maybe not the exact same plot, but pretty similar, I'm pretty sure. And I think I I've watched the other one, but I can't remember all all the details because I have, I it's been a long time since I watched it, but. And I think I I've watched the other one but I can't remember all all the details because I have I it's been a long time since I watched it but. Who's in this movie Natalie Portman and Ashton Kutcher who's in the other movie Justin Timberlake and Myla Kunis. Same situation another polyamorous movie and who's who gets married later on? Two thou- I was it two thousand fifteen Myla Kunis and Ashton Kutcher isn't that interesting? So anyhow uh these these uh friends get involved with each other. And they end up becoming um friends with benefits basically. And um and eventually of course another Cinderella story they end up uh falling in love and and hooking up. Very simple very basic funny interesting and uh progressive I believe um. Two thousand nine Push now this was an interesting movie. Uh um with Chris Evans Dakota Fanning Camilla Belle Camila Belle. Uh Ja- Ja- Jaime Honsu. Uh anyhow um uh very paranormal movie if you like paranormal uh which I love I love paranormal movies. Then that's a good movie for you to watch um they they and and they you know it's in the future this company is is is. Is testing all these gifted. Kids maybe I I don't know if it's or people I I think it's just people uh you know basically psychics. With all you know clairvoyance clair- clair- clairaudience clair- clairstentience blah blah blah. They're taste- testing them and then Camila Belle ends up being one of these people and and. They're giving them some kind of a dose of something and all of them are dying from from this from this drug or whatever they. They keep modifying and they keep dying and finally she's the only one that survives and lives come to find out she's one of the one of the um. Uh what did they call them I can't remember what they called them. They they're not cops they're like cops but they call them something else um. Let me see if I can figure that out anyhow the. Oh here they are uh divisions that's what that's what that's right anyhow they the um. She's one of these beings that's in the division which is like the CIA or the mafia or or not mafia but the um. Uh FBI or cop or whatever uh law enforcement either way she's in law enforcement. And they give her this drug and she ends up surviving it and so now the somehow they they lose. They lose the 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 drug and they somebody hides it in some some thing. Uh further down the road and so everybody the mafia the the law enforcement and and. These gifted people uh Chris Evans and Deco- Dakota Fanning are looking for this 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 drug so that they can. They can um cause otherwise whoever whoever g- ends up with the drug is gonna be basically being able to rule the world type of thing, right? And this is actually a really good movie for Chris Evans and Dakota Fanning uh and also Camilla Camila Belle. And uh De- Dejmond um as well so anyhow um. Dakota Fanning her character has a certain topic power she can draw stuff and and basically see into the future. And Chris Evans can can uh do telekinesis and move stuff um. And then Camila uh Belle I can't remember what she what her what her um ability was but. But oh she can get into people's heads and make them think something that that has nothing to do with what. What they would be thinking about otherwise and and until she put that thought into their mind, right? So it's like that. So it's kinda like um that movie with um. Um what's his name anyhow it's it's they they finally find the drug and. The mafia shows up the law enforcement shows up the psychics show up. And 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 at at the very end uh you know they they keep they keep um. They keep saying that the the psychics are in it in are going to end up dead because you know of whatever's going on. So at the very end of course they change the the pattern of the future which is I what I've been telling people. You know there there are time travelers that are coming back in into our age and saying oh well this 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 has happened. So what who gives a shit that was your future and that's where you're at and that's okay there's nothing wrong with that. But it doesn't mean that has to be our future whether good bad or indifferent, right? We always every second of the day every microsecond of the day. You know there's change going on all the time period constant continuous. And that doesn't mean we have to we have to have the same future as all these other time travelers. Uh we we can have our own future whether good bad or indifferent again and and. Change it at will at will so but um anyhow uh and again. That doesn't that's not n- bad or good that's that's just is that's just the way it is. Uh so anyhow the the psychics end up with the drug and all this stuff and 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 at the very end. The the supervisor for the division which is the uh Dejmond. Y- y- I don't know how you say your name dude sorry but anyhow he. Camila ends up sh- uh shooting him at the end so it was it was kinda interesting. Um what's the worst that could happen? Oh two thousand one oh and the other movie Push came out two thousand nine um. Two thousand one with uh Martin Lawrence Danny DeVito Carmen uh Jo- Jogo Nora Dunn. John Luwizamo Bernie Mac Glenn Hedley. L Larry Miller Richard Schiff. Uh William Fitchner and Sasha Knopf um. Oh my god what a hilarious movie uh you know this is back in two thousand one it still works it's still rated two thumbs up I still rated it two thumbs up, right? Uh so anyhow um Mar- Martin Lawrence is is a thief, right? He's a professional thief. And so he get it gets involved I believe with Ca- Carmen Jogo I I don't know if that's who but anyhow she's um. She he gets uh and and ends up getting involved with her and he goes to this house that supposedly he's supposed to be going. Um bankrupt or something like he's gonna be foreclosed and and they're gonna sell all the all the property from it, right? So before that before that happens he goes in there and 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 s- somehow him and John Lu- Lu- Luwizamo. Uh end up going to the house to to rob it, right? They have all these nice things in there so anyhow Danny DeVito. Ends up ends up uh being in the house um with a mistress one of his mistress friends so it's a Playboy bunny or something like that I don't know what. Uh so anyhow he's there and they're 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 robbing the house. And and they get caught Danny DeVito calls the cops and Martin Lawrence gets caught and and he and John ends up escaping, right? So anyhow Martin Martin has this nice ring that that his new girlfriend um. I can't remember if that was Carmen or Nora but anyhow one of I think it was one of them but anyhow um he ends up. That his girlfriend gives him this ring and Danny DeVito goes well that's my ring uh you need to give it to me and the cops are going. Whoa uh you need to give him that ring he goes and Martin Lawrence is Lawrence is going no no that's my ring my girlfriend gave it to me blah blah blah. And they're going yeah right you're you're you just got caught ripping off this house and that's your ring. So the cops make him give him that r- that ring, right? So to Danny DeVito that's like a prize that's like a trophy that he robbed of a a thief that was robbing him, right? So uh so the the this this game this competition goes keeps going on with uh with the ring and. Martin Lawrence is going like I'm gonna get that ring back and then finally the girlf- girlfriend um. Like Carmen or Nora I can't remember uh ends up. Who's the wife I I don't remember who the I wanna say Sasha Knopf is the wife but anyhow Danny DeVito's character's wife. That he she ends up with somehow um that Martin Lawrence. Girlfriend is wearing a jacket that he's that they stole from Danny DeVito's wife, right? So she re- Danny DeVito's wife recognizes and they they both end up in the bathroom. And they they do they figure it out, you know, and so and and they both uh end up. Um setting this 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 stage to rip Danny DeVito or I don't know whatever but. You know they 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 set him up and at the very end uh Martin Lawrence finally gets his ring back. And the and the girlfriend's all pissed off at her you know you're you're going through all this shit because because of some stupid ring that I gave you oh. If you don't get rid of that ring I you and I are through at the very end, right? He's he's she's like pissed off and so he goes oh no and he just throws the ring away so anyhow funny movie funny hilarious movie. So anyhow I'm just gonna rip through the rest because um it's only one it's al- we're already almost two hours into this. So Eurovision Song Contest Will Ferrell um Rachel McAd- Mc- McAdams. Uh Pierce Bronson Dan Stevens and Melissa Melissa Anthony. Uh Mah- Mahut and Demi Lovato uh it came out this year I di- um actually this is based on a. Uh an an actual event that takes place in um called Eurovi- Eurovision and. I think it's gonna be going I I I think probably at the beginning of the year it'll take place but they have this contest going on. So anyhow these Will Ferrell and and this is actually a good uh movie good part for both Will Ferrell and and Rachel Mc- McAdams. They're they're um they're from Iceland and Will Ferrell since he's a kid. I'm gonna join I'm gonna compete in Euro- Eurovision and and I'm gonna win and so anyhow um. So at the very end they they actually have a chance to win they get involved and they do this amazing amazing um. What do you call it um? Group or sing-along group sing-along like towards the beginning of the movie which is incredibly awesome. And and so anyhow they 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 find they do end up in in this Eurovision contest. And at the very end they have the chance to win it but they just they end up singing it a a song that Rachel. Rachel's character um writes uh a- at at the co- contest. And so they end up singing that song and I mean wow great great uh some great stuff going on there um. But but there was the the and the thing is that whoever wrote it I don't think did a great job and some of the acting was. I mean whoever directed it I I think just didn't do a great job anyhow Feel The Beat uh came out again this year. Sophia Carson and Wolfgang Novogratz uh Donna Lynn Cham- Chaplin. Enrico Col- Colin Tony uh Brandon Kyle Goodman and Eva Hodge. Um Feel The Beat this and this is a good good movie for. Uh if you got a uh you're a family you got kids especially a young girls wanting to be dancers. Um th- this uh Ca- Sophia Carson's character she's in New York she gets kicked out. Kicked out of the the uh dancing business because she she screws over some woman that happens to know everybody. The all the uh uh in the business of dancing and so anyhow she goes home and she coaches these little these little girls. And now it was interesting because there was a girl that did sign language and and she was a dancer. So she and and I I don't know well this is not a a true story movie but but a v- very interesting perception. You know take on on dancing and so anyhow they end up they do end up going to the finals and. And um Sophia gets back into the business in New York and and she ends up in this big Broadway show. And all the family and all the all the kids and all whatever um end up going to the show because the. The guy that 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 produced the show uh ends up giving them tickets to the show anyhow. Fun movie The Hustle this is the second time I've watched it it came out last year Rebel Wilson Anne Hathaway Alex Sharp. Um eh Rebel Wilson and Anne Hathaway are con artists oh my god they go through all these thing all these. These episodes and uh ro- rob these people all this jewelry all this money. And then they end up with um meeting this other kid uh like like one of these um kids that that's um. A computer hack or whatever and and he he ends up conning them and so. So at the very end they end up um teaming up together a- a- as a threesome and and doing some other stuff. Anyhow uh two thousand eighteen A Dirty Dealing with Madsen Michael Madsen Fredo Farrell. Uh Adriana Maddix uh C Thomas Hal- Howe um. I I I the only reason I gave this movie a one point five thumbs up was because. Again all these last three mo- uh movies including Eurovision I gave a a one point five thumbs up. Um but the only reason I gave this movie uh the biggest reason I gave gave a one point five is cause of the the plot you know they. There these these um these Las Vegas dealers uh blackjack dealers are. Come together and to steal money from from the casino so that they give they can fund um. Um one of the one of the girl's kids um operation cause he needs an operation for something kidney operation or something. Costs twenty thousand dollars so they do this this whole routine to to steal money from the casino so they can fund this this operation. And and because of that goodwill gesture that was the only reason I I gave it one point five. Otherwise this this movie was just a you know sham but that's what's at the point. Um High Strung and that came out in two thousand eighteen uh High Strung Free Dance came out in two thousand eighteen. Uh Juliette uh Doherty Ha- Harry Davis Th- Thomas Doherty Ace Body uh Kika Markham. And Jane Seymour oh yeah the um yeah very int- another Cinderella movie um. This dancer at the very beginning she does a routine she screws something up so she slips. Put puts on some other clothes and slips into uh into the lineup again. And the the director's like didn't I already call upon you she goes uh she was yeah well I I don't know I don't know what she said but anyhow. Yes and he goes well you couldn't do do the turn she goes oh yeah I can do the turn just let me do the turn. So anyhow she ends up being um the star um dancer at the very end they they end up bringing in some other. Uh ho- uh popular singer dancer a girl a woman female. To to do the the lead part and she ends up screwing up her ankle so anyhow this Juliette Dor- Doherty ends up uh doing the. Um the the lead part at the very end um. All Night Nighter uh came out in two thousand fifteen Emile Her- uh Hirsch. J K Simons and uh Annalay Tipton John uh Da- Daly and Christian Shaw um. At the beginning Emile Hirsch and and um. Annalay Tipton are an item their girlfriend but they meet with the father who's J K Simons his character. And she ends up d- uh they end up breaking up um and so anyhow the father goes to his house. Well where's my daughter I've been trying to text her blah 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 she doesn't answer to kind of find out they they go you know they go through all this mirages all this shit going on. And and then um they finally found find Annalay Tipton with another boyfriend they took off on vacations and where else and blah blah blah. Um two thousand fifteen The Escort now that was an interesting movie um again. Some more polyamorous stuff going on Lindsay Fonzieca and Michael uh Doniger. Uh Michael Doniger is a writer at this this place I some newspaper or something he gets fired and so. He uh ends up doing uh following this uh Lindsay Fon- Fonzieca around she's an escort. So that he can write a story and so he follows her around of course they don't get along and then they finally get along and they hook up and blah blah blah. Uh Amateur Night Jason Biggs Jenny Molen and Janet Montgomery Ashley Tisdale and Bria O Murphy. Came out in two thousand fifteen um funny movie Jason Biggs and uh is like married to this woman and. I think she's pregnant yeah she's pregnant and they're getting ready to have a kid and he loses his job so finally he 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 gets this job who. Whom his wife I think Jenny Molen is the wife I can't remember any or Janet Montgomery you know no I think it's Jenny Molen but anyhow. The wife finds him a job doing as a driver so ti- turns out that this driver job is for for uh for escorts he drives all these escorts around. So anyhow he drives them to to this party this one main party and oh my god he gets out of hand and. Finally he says screw it and he takes off and then and then the 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 wife ends up in the hospital so he goes to the hospital. Follows along she's just not having the kid and the water doesn't break yet so he goes back to the party and and finishes up and and um. I don't know it was just uh there was uh it was a hoot it was interesting but there was uh definitely some some stuff. Again there the details aren't refined enough and good enough to make it e- even for slapstick to make it uh plausible. So it's like that Planet Cool uh Chris Evans Michelle Monaghan Topher Grace uh Aubrey Plaza Luke Wilson. Anthony Ma- Mackey uh Philip. Anthony Ma- Mackie, uh Philip uh Baker Hall uh came out two thousand fourteen. Again, another um another um Cinderella Story, uh Chris Evans um somehow goes to this party and Michelle Monigan is who's involved with some other boyfriend that she's gonna marry uh somehow touch base and so anyhow they they end up running into each other and but in the meantime, she he's looking for her too because he wants to talk to her some more cause he he really likes her. So anyhow, in they end up hooking up. Again, more polyamorous stuff. They go, well, why don't we have sex and and see if that just doesn't doesn't um solve our problem and because we both like each other and and so they do, they have sex with each other and she goes back and marries the guy. Uh and and at the very end, she ends up backing out and and Chris Evans is like trying to find her and finally he finds her and and they and and they talk it through. Anyhow, um Cass and Dylan, Richard Dreyfuss, uh Tatiana and oh Tatiana Maslin. Oh, this is a good g- uh came out two thousand thirteen. Good movie for Richard Dreyfuss um and Tatiana Maslin. Uh they they um she's like this runaway um what I can't I can't remember anyhow, but he's a doctor and he's got um a a tumor in his head and he's gonna die, so he's gonna go to California and try to get in touch with his daughter. And anyhow, she jumps in the car and tags along and they go through all these mirages and stuff. Uh there's some really funny stuff and then finally at the very end um he um he takes this drug and he does, he ke- he basically commits suicide and she takes off to the beach and then comes back and he leaves leaves a letter, basically leaving all everything for her and so so she can have her kid and everything. Anyhow, um I'm gonna leave it at that. I I still got some more, but I'm I'm pretty much out of time right now. Um so um uh uh I'll finish up the rest later and um let me see, but ma- I wanna make sure. Oh no, I wanna do this one right now. Um Expecting with uh Michelle Monigan, Rada Mitchell, John Dor and Michael Weston. Um the this was actually a really good part for Michelle Monigan and Rada Mitchell. The Michelle's pregnant and she doesn't wanna have the kid, so she goes, well, Rada, you have my you take my kid. So she ends up moving in with Rada and her husband and they go through all this stuff, mirage stuff and and um and um finally she has the baby. She goes, sorry, Rada, but I wanna I I changed my mind. I wanna keep the kid, right? So so anyhow, Rada and and her husband in the meantime are having problems and they they end up uh getting divorced or whatever and and um they live happily ever after, right? So it's like that. So anyhow, I wanna thank you for stopping by. Have an awesome Fourth of July. And um again, just have fun. Um you know, don't be stupid. Don't murder other people and and not wear a mask, especially if you have the coronavirus. Uh and and don't commit suicide by not wearing a mask either. So it's like that. So have a uh have awesome, be safe and uh have a God goddess weekend. Be the love that you are, always have been and always will be. Aloha.